You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 26, 2023 special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome everybody to the special meeting of the town of LaPorte County. But please. Let's wait. Like I said. In this. The original line, I've been at this one year, Jenny, and that was uh. Accounting practices, but in addition to that, you could uh. There are agenda items on the menu now. There's a federal tax penalty we need to talk about. There are the 2020 financials. There's a file insurance claim for legal expenses. There is the issue of monthly report from Senator, monthly report from legal expenses. Civic contract changes and the role of budget finance here. So as far as accounting practices, I think all these other things kind of fall under that. Uh Tim, my understanding is we discussed another federal tax penalty related payment. Can you put us on that?
I'm gonna wait till Trista comes in from Senator's office. She and I have analyzed that and she believes it is possibly an error. And uh our IRS.
Here she is.
And she's researching that right now, but. Trista. The question on the floor is the IRS.
Um can you come up with a word?
But IRS uh.
Even there's a bottom line, then it's like. That can handle that.
Morning. Nice to see you in person instead of off my screen. This was better than I think the clerkery is referring to last Friday while our associate here and I'm here. A notice came into the mail through the mail from the IRS on the first quarter payroll taxes. The notice indicated they had been paid or. And then there were some that had been made late. There were four dates that the notice listed. There is a fee that the IRS is requesting be paid three hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents, I believe. As a lengthy penalty. However, on Tuesday, when we were here, we started looking through the payroll system to confirm if the dates of the IRS that were late actually matched what the town records show. Um because specifically there were three dates listed in March on consecutive weeks. We don't pay what only happens every other week. So that date in the middle, the IRS was claiming was a due date, didn't make any sense. Uh to us right off the bat, just moving up the notice. In the civic system, that what we saw on Tuesday was that payroll was done every other week as we expected in March. Uh and we're looking further than into um. We looked further in the bank statement to see when the bank Horizon Bank says they can pay. The Horizon Bank statement does show um payments to the IRS every other week as you would expect matching onto the payroll dates. Uh so we will next uh contact the IRS, let them know that we have some proof that their date doesn't seem to be correct and ask further uh from them why they believe. It's correct. There is a lot traffic system that we believe uh through clerkery's login that we also can do a little bit further research on the IRS side on what their history reflects. Um to get down to the final answer, so there's a few more weeks. There's generally a thirty to sixty day, depending on the type of notice, a thirty to sixty day response window. Uh to respond to the IRS, I did two resolve the matter for to show that we have. Uh disagree with their notice. And so we'll be working to finalize all that up next week within two weeks of receiving that notice.
Tris- Tris, I think when you continue to investigate this further, you find, and I shared this, that with the previous employee, what was done is today's payday for it and to the other Friday. But what was occurring and I brought to that employees' attention was that we were sometimes getting paid on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, and we should not have been, but for whatever reason, I don't know if it was out of convenience, that is funny, it offered us that date. But we should be paying every other Friday, which is what we've always done. And unfortunately, like last year, we had not been doing that. I think maybe that might have something to do with when those payroll taxes were not paid. We're probably a little bit out on the dates and that. Uh because I would see it on my online banking that my payroll check would come in on a Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday sometimes rather than the Friday.
That can cause some confusion, and the clerk there, I had talked about that already last week. Um so yeah, consistent, I guess it's Tuesday actually, while they were processing, had a consistent time. The employees expected both for their budget purposes, of course, it might be nice to get paid early, but yet um then if you don't get paid early, when you do expect it, it just can cause confusion. So that had a regular schedule, which by um nature then will allow all these extra things for the federal taxes and state taxes, the retirement contributions, all of those to happen on a regular basis. Um you know, the same day, every two weeks, we know that this is our our task at hand for today. Um very quickly agree with that, I think that's probably this thought before I even mentioned it differently. And that will allow them those consistent payments. If payroll was paid by the community early in the week, uh the due date is typically by Friday to the event, if it's been at the end of the week, Saturday, Friday, Thursday, or Friday, then those taxes are due by the following Wednesday. Our suggestion always has been to go ahead and process those tax contributions, recover contributions either that very day that you tell the bank to send a deposit or the very next morning. So that there's a regular routine process in place and it happens, you know, like a lot of different times. So I think that's the plan.
Uh that's a good point.
Well, we got your, just to tend to some expediency while we get younger, uh Tristan. The um I think the intent, at least from my understanding, of the council's intent was six months to a year was to have you assisting with some regular location and uh kind of, you know, take a look at our certainly the state at a minimum. And I think the intent moving forward is for you to help us with this deep dive that you started recently. And then to continue, I think, at least maybe the council's intent clear today is that you'll continue to help us not only with the deep dive, statements, fire opposing, and some of these other more specific things accomplished, but we also have the. And I think I believe, and I certainly like to make motion, the council approved that you continue to stay involved on a weekly basis, at least through the budget process and help us with that. Um in terms of some of these payroll issues and some of that, I think your expertise is critical to having us do the correct thing over the next six months to a year. In my mind, so I guess I have a big emotion unless you you have a problem on being able to do that in the company.
No, no, my, if I could just come up with a moment, um our goal here today and probably realistically, uh next week, we'll be back next week, we have to talk about them, that is exactly Monday, July 1st. Uh I don't expect that we read back on Tuesday, maybe Wednesday. Um is to finish these bank records and going to verify they are started, at least the evidence that they were started. They're not necessarily completed. Um those need to be completed to close out the year of twenty-two, the system. And then uh council's carried forward into, as we know, the report is for twenty-three. Um and then to get those bankrupts finalized in the show. Um I expect, based on the records that we do see, what we've seen in civics so far, because they were started, that this bankrupt process should be done within a week or two, we just can't predict any religious necessarily, but um which means that heading into early June, we should have things thoroughly well settled out and can then start to look into the budget process on, you know, beginning of July, which should be the regular schedule. I don't know that once the bankrupts are on the move, becoming of insight in person weekly. We certainly will continue to communicate with clerk period to status questions arise. Um I understand that uh assuming it's still in place, that rural, I'm sorry, I don't even understand is coming back to employment, that's um she has, as I understand, was prior history of knowledge of how things operate. And so if that is what the plan turns out to be, uh then she will be able to take over some of the things that we've done the last two times we've been here, which is that our voices are required to process things like that, the day-to-day one. Um which would reduce our time that's needed and we can focus then on the monthly balancing, the monthly financial reports and that to be all as we used to do. Um uh about a year and a half ago, is kind of when that started to stop, I think. So that would be then our routine of all the going forward is to make sure that the budget spending and the council would have those monthly updates uh after the bankrupt is finished in a timely fashion, usually within just the very first five or six days of the next month. The bankrupt should be able to be finished here in July. And we can then prepare that financial report to let you know where the balances are at, where your main budgets are. Um and have that. You know, assistance in that level.
So we get the basic accounting portions, you know, the summary sorts of things that may be going on all the time, and you're helping us get to that point. If the clerk's office wants a way to help with that process, that's fine. Council's perspective, at least from my personal perspective, we also have a need for management information, things like, you know, some of the expenditures that we want made, we need to go over that.
Yes.
Once you guys have done the sports, we've passed, we've done projections for five years out, what the revenue stream would look like in case Chris, I know, man, it's stable. We got our capital plan that we instituted and we want to continue to update that and it's how you guys have those kinds of things.
Yeah.
And so again, my my intent that I've proposed for me to involve us this morning is that you're involved, it's gonna be pretty heavy for a while, because we haven't been able to get this kind of information from their situation. So get us to what we're going on, we're cleaning things up, we also need you involved in that, just the summary data events or verification of the summary data things, but also.
Yeah, and and that specific kind of terminology management is in my mind when I discuss about helping with the budget and the monthly updates. Um just a little bit different verbiage, but the same exact ideas.
It's like. I don't know, we need to vote on that, make it clear. Maybe motion that doesn't. For the perceived future.
Exactly.
And I think that's part of our current engagement letters that we have to leave in the theaters box.
It's only second, but we'll check it out.
I say. So.
Okay.
I'm gonna do this side of the point of your session.
This is funny. This is actually, because we started to keep a lot of. Who reported twenty twenty two by two. Governor not, you know, the implications of not being closed. Sure. That would be able to put the books, hopefully with all those kinds of arms.
Uh on Tuesday, we run the phone with Civic to verify a few things in the system. Um and that, he whose name we have written down and I forget at the moment, but anyway. He verified for me that in fact, twenty-two had not been closed in the Civic system, which is why part of um the entries being made now to total three. Um sometimes errors pop up in the system to say they can't be allocated to balances properly, because that twenty-two is closed. So um that is, as I mentioned, part of the process here that's on the the emergent horizon to get those bankers done in the year closed in the system. Um ideally, that should happen in by the very end of January, early February of a year. So that, when that financial ending report is provided on gateway to the DLG. All the numbers are finalized, the report is good to go, no have to touch it again. Um I mentioned to clerk period, and I think also to tell the straight or swift stat that as we get twenty-two closed out then, we will want to go back, verify the AFR commission that's been posted. Uh if there is any discrepancy because of adjustments that either had been made in the meantime from this February till now, or anything that we might need to remain. It is appropriate and acceptable to open that AFR back up, make the adjustments, and then resubmit it. There's a line in the DLG to do that. Um it is absolutely the town's best interest to make those adjustments and resubmit the AFR so that uh the report to the state matches your financial records here in the town. And then when the water comes in the future, everything is is hunky-dory basically, I use that phrase in long time. Um so. Kind of wrong answer I give to your question, but hopefully that helps explain what you were wondering in getting um the best reports finalized as they should be through this process.
Listen. Uh okay.
I'm gonna run, um if I may, to get my daughter to a doctor's appointment. She had a picture last night to the line drive off her chest, somewhere about go get a reaction, but I understand to call in, it can still do so. Or in anyone, there's a few people that have my phone number, you're welcome to call me, I'll be in the car for them. If any questions.
I think there are max four kind of questions, which I'd like to refer to you. We, as everyone knows, we got a change in my uh staff. The individual who was along with this did a lot of these functions, so I I don't, I can't guarantee it. That's from the minute back to the minute, I can answer all your questions. But if Tristan can maybe you want to add a few by your quickly, or I'll respond maybe you know.
And again, I can call in and just be available as well.
Anything that I have on the agenda, we should be fully set for us. Uh from that to the final of the year's week, has been a for period of liability insurance plan regarding legal expenses for you. Can you fill us in on that?
I I don't think that's an issue, I I don't.
I think that's an issue, we're talking about the dollars.
Uh I was finding email and of course, I can't speak to that. For my turn.
Okay. Do we know?
What was your question at the end?
I wanted to know, I had to go to the filing on insurance plan with the town insurance carrier to cover this legal expense. Uh next, monthly report, so basically, what I think we're asking for is a monthly report of the Senator's debt. Okay, can you do that?
Yeah, once I have her invoices.
Okay, so we could have that every time council made that a degree. And then we also have a monthly report of the mortgage and expenses since they made a issue.
I don't see an issue, but yes.
I think.
Well, it was in my budget.
Yeah, as long as there were the budget, but again, there might be a report.
Yes.
Thanks. Um so I understand there's been some proposed changes to the city contract regarding giving more favorable access. Can you fill us in on that?
In, I think, March, I had a, I had two minutes from the March town council meeting, and I believe uh there was a motion to approve to expand so that uh this is gonna go down, and that concluded, but it's not going into uh adding licenses so more people can work on the system at the same time who are in the office. For example, currently, only two people can be on it, so Lynn, for example, at Water in Vienna. Uh if they're both on it, then my office, Trista, can be on it. So we uh, one proposal that was approved by the town council was to expand among workers that can be outside at the same time. The other thing that was approved was to move the civic system to the cloud so that Senator, for example, doesn't have to come here and monitor our civic system, making it better in their office. But it's a partnership. It's in the process, it it got held up for some reason. Uh wouldn't have passed, but we're, was the Tristan's help, I think, will have an accomplished next release.
Uh in relation to that, when I was in Water, the DM and I were both on civic system, Bill couldn't access it, so we had to be very, we had to be very careful, we just had to get off the system so that the other one could get on, whether Bill was doing invoices or any of that, so.
Like right now, Tristan's on or Aaron and the water car is on and I can't get on. It's negative deposits, the inferior deposit. Unless one of them logs out.
Okay, so there's a cost involved.
It it'll say maximum workstations in use.
So there's a cost involved, and there's more licenses, not re-licenses. We're at, we're focusing that one, and again, that also approved by the town council, so I have that.
The cost involved.
What it is.
That makes, it makes sense, I mean, we worked around it, but Water car was trying to put in all the checks and and then the end's trying to make the top, and Bill's trying to do payroll, or ten. Then one of them had to dig some payments. We've been marking out of it.
It will be new one. We're marking. Uh next to the end, I have this budget and finance committee role, uh there's concerns that the last finance committee, but with the global, but the finance, what, and I'm sitting on that committee, I am scanning is the their advisory committee and they're supposed to kind of do the daily work on the budget and finance issues so they can make recommendations to that council, does anybody disagree with that?
So one of the issues we have, I think, is we need to get the information, first of all, I think we test ourselves, like I'm on here. Think we test ourselves with a working projection through at least you to keep the budget in. Good, that's correct. So that would, I mean, important. The intent, I believe, in order to make those productive is to have the information ahead of the meetings. So I I kind of want to make it clear that we get the financial statements and the things we need to make some analysis and presents potential. Or if we had that information for the. Just to make. If Tristan's gonna help us with the information, if we're gonna be, get scheduled to do it once we get the budget by next committee, we can actually decide on that schedule. And then I think maybe Tristan's maybe can be there. Okay, can you facilitate that?
What day is the such a finance meeting?
Again, anybody that's interested, it's on the website, but currently we have a schedule.
When you meet the week after?
Let's see, we're scheduled for the fourteenth in June.
Okay.
Um we have a council meeting on the twelfth, we can move the meeting around. It'd be to point in there in a year. So then try to get it to the council. When we try to be able to see what, what. Move the budget and finance meeting to the seventh of June. So we're, I think there was some talk about trying to get it in the future. I think we try to, I give the budget and finance report, you know, council meeting. So why don't you just, unless there's a Catholic that I'm not aware of, why don't we try to do the budget, that's typically dirty, so I'll send you an email. To you and Tristan.
In seven eight.
I think we'll go to seven, we'll try to stay on the first Wednesday to mark this.
I think there is a pre-pre budget finance in the future to the first Wednesday.
Yes, uh I think that's what we need to have most.
You want eight thirty or nine?
I think eight thirty, eight thirty is what we've been doing. Uh again.
I will change as soon as then. Okay, I got nothing more, anybody have any comments from the council? I'm in front of you, yeah. Good. I think it's maybe.
Yes.
My name is Grant King, resident, twenty-seven, fifth, sixth floor, prayer. And I'm wondering if I, if I'm correct, I believe the sale of for the new public building has taken place.
So what's sale? The the sale of the land, uh.
Again, my counsel, well, the right is, it's not a question of enhancing such, I'm not sure you're right. It's kind of, I mean, I'm asking. I'm sorry, I was speaking over the casual, so I would get a dead or something.
Yeah. Uh thank you, so. I wonder if any, I understand that the sale has been made to Long Beach Public Building Corporation. I'm wondering if anyone can tell me more about this corporation.
That's Chris, that's not, that's in the session.
That's true, that's not invented, the public building corporation is a statutory uh entity by which the town financed, used to uh as far as we're able to finance the building. The same thing was done years ago, there was a building corporation for the town law. Unfortunately, that's administratively, this all probably because not, it wasn't used out of the initial project, this would be for this. Right, same concept, so all of this process, all of the negotiations put in place by the town council. It's the corporation at the direction of the council. And the building corporation was formed by this council, so it it is a vehicle by which essentially the sale is back uh that is it's it's accounting for lack of letter description, so that entity during the lease period will be the holder, it's a nonprofit organization under the law, is the holder of the property.
But it's a private corporation.
Yeah, all of it, it's it's not, it's a public entity, but let's go further, as part of the article to the corporation, it is written in there, I think, for the Secretary of State website, and the documents are available throughout the town. You know, it goes in the U.S. So as part of the article to the corporation, one of the restrictions is that if that corporation ever sees it doing business for any reason, goes out of business, quits its business, and it's only a holding company. Probably reverse back to that. Okay, as part of the lease, in the language, and this was brought up before, and you're gonna go to paragraph eleven of the lease. It says that there are different, the town could pay off sooner, the town could invoke, but at the end of the lease application, if they put together a payment uh stream between the line council, between our Senator's office, at the end of that, the town will be the title for this early property again. So I don't wanna say that I'll say that's, you know, that, no, I'm just trying to understand, you guys. A sale of town has a essentially, yes, as a transfer is part of what's allowed by using this public ability for great people, buying, or sell that's private individuals or not private, but I I would think there are revenue stream of the the town, again, I'm asking a question. I don't understand, everyone's understanding, be transparent. Uh for example, the town might sell a parcel for a term of years, twenty years. Let's say three million dollars. It's leased back to the town for an extra charge. Uh I've heard a figure of eight million dollars in the course of twenty years. So the town sold it for free, ends up paying eight million in the course of twenty years. That money doesn't go back to the town, goes to private individuals. No. It's misinformation that I don't know how I can educate you. No, I don't, no, no, absolutely, I'm not, I'm not telling you that, that's misinformation, that's all. I'd love to, you can do that. And the entire package of documents have been sent to everybody on this council, they're all public records. Some of them, some of the audience have, and they've recently distributed. Then the stream and how exactly how it works, they both buy and share with us. Is played out of how those funds are gonna the number, the number of the bond issued being the two point eight million in change. And then the string of, and I guess paid back in person.
And then the string of, and the balance gets paid back in person, which is. What, essentially, what this building corporation allows is what the town could not have been going to do. It's been discussed that, and I'm repeating this because you weren't exercising those meetings. But the town couldn't help the line of duty. Constitutionally, there's the death limit, and the town had a decision to make, whether, whether they apply honestly, these things. And more by time of the water project, other, and do you take up or death limit on this project? Or do you build this robin, the council made after giving some due diligence between the two, they're the decision makers. That this building corporation, again, which is statute or a speeding, then, again, the, the entire package is available. It shows, so this eight million dollars, I'm not sure where that comes from, I'm sure they get that, uh, but it, it, it is two point eight million. And as council designated for committed, that the building project is a two point five million dollar project. And it included all of the additional costs, et cetera. So that was the total, that the amount, that is the finance, uh, limit that, uh, was part of the bond issue. Okay, and then the payment stream and the plan that was put together, the financial plan, I'll send you. That lays out how it's getting paid back. Okay. So if anyone on board, your representative, also on Long Beach Public Building Corporation? No, those members are all residents of the town. Just like it was, we, I mean, previously, you can look up, if you decided, if you wanted to go to the Indiana Secretary of State website, you can look up for yourself, the, in the business services division, you can look up any entity the town previously had, was paid of or citizen. You can look around the state of Indiana for building corporations, fire stations in small towns, town councils. This is a bit relevant, this is a bit interesting, this one, but, no, 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 I'm saying, this is the, what I'm saying is, this is the council. So the, the board members are all residents that were, uh, selected by the town council and considered by the town council. Well, I'm commenting only because it could create an appearance of conflicting interests if the board was also involved on another financial end of this Long Beach Public Building Corporation. I, I received, uh, something that, chief, your signings and some documents, they're all mentioned. So it seems like there is something involved, I guess, I like, oh, yes. There is misinformation and there's that, hey, those who are clearly not in favor of it. So let's talk about chiefs, well, they're, 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 there's some, there's misinformation. All right, this is gonna, I'm gonna give you misinformation where you guys are proud of. For anyone who just said, uh, the, at the meeting of which the building corporation had its introductory meeting and made decisions with regard to and understand, the closing date is May second for the bonds, okay? That was determined, the town council voted at a previous Monday meeting, I don't remember the date at this point. We're ready to move forward. But next thing you know, the bond corporation, or sorry, the bond council, which is James Shanahan and Carl Sander communicated with the bank and they decided May second, so we'll meet local means. That kind of switched everything together, their timeframe. Cause they were, they've been ready to move forward, these documents that were prepared by the bond council in preparation, I mean, it was really waiting on the council to determine the method of financing. If anybody could be directed, in my recollection of this, wrong. So as part of this, the building corporation, they're holding over. That's essentially, that's all they, okay, except they, they are the less one with the sale lease back. As part of that, in order to not have to make this meet for every single decision, because they don't all really involve, they're a holding corporation. What is very standard in this is that they appoint representatives who can authorize releases upon what they're accrued. Okay, so it is also very standard for the council to manage this product. And again, understand they're entry related, and I understand the concept that there are two different entities, there are different points of interest. I'm sure that one's communicating financial, that's involved. It's all straightforward, and if all of those documents are available, you know, the plant, the request for the funds from the bank, those are all available, all right? So what is very standard in the US bank asked for is that town representatives, the town clerk treasurer is usually the standard person, the town administrator. Not town manager, let's be clear, because that's been grown quite a bit. Town manager actually has authority and makes decisions outside of the town council. Town administrator, uh, chief's role in doing that is gathering information and being the point person. In this context, and so I want to make sure that we're back to the building corporation. There is an actual document that appoints from the building corporation for the treasurer and chief Swist, that as the town administrator, who be designated authorized representatives of the building for. So that when they pay them, so all of us, nobody ever has the two point eight million dollars. That when the bonds were sold and reported, US bank is serving as the trustee, they folded it in construction. When payments, invoices are sent to them, that request is sent in the town is voted by that, they, those get approved. And then one of these two, like that, there is a signature page where Mark Swist, that signature, authorizing, if anybody was interested in looking at all three pages versus just that signature page, that's a three page document, which is a closing memory, by a little summary, authorizing the receipt of the bond receipt to move forward. So is, he is offered, both of them are authorized, and some they found dead in the town council. That's, that's our, that's where. Well, thank you for all that, I, uh, it can create the appearance. It can create, and I agree. Uh, so that's something I'm keeping an eye on. One, one other question is, again, according to public documents, when the sale was made, uh, the tax parcel was included, included this time, oh, I know. I'm, I'm pretty sure this. It, it doesn't, and, and there is a string there, there are, the deed is being recorded, but it does not include the town hall and that. They'll be reported deed that. They'll be the advantage, what I'm holding here that separates the town hall and the central. Yes, there is going to be, there's, I just recorded with the county as well. So that, that is, the town hall is one of the missing. Okay. It's absolutely not. Okay, uh, I'll be, we're following, yeah, there's a, right now it is included. And so you're saying that, I mean, they've been made to separate the town hall, excellent. All right, answer any questions? Quit asking. I'm asking, can I answer those? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, I'm here, I'm just twenty three hundred, Laura. Um, there are just a couple of words that have come out today that I hope people will listen to. And thank you, Chris, for taking the time to answer, you don't have to answer. Um, misinformation, 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 misinformation. And I think it gets spread, um, today I was sitting outside and you hear, oh, it's the drama, oh, it's this. You know, let's just let you all do your jobs and I appreciate it, um, the time that you've taken to review all of this for the public safety building. There is no conspiracy, um, there is transparency. As we continue to say repeatedly, these documents are on file, these documents are public. They can be passed around from the conspiracy people, from the misinformation. But again, thank you for using that word or asking people to listen to what the council does. You meet, you talk, you discuss, you look at budgets, you look at finance. And, um, the documents are there. Chief Swist, I want to commend you on the job that you are doing as town administrator. It's made a huge difference to this town in terms of attention being paid, not only to your police department, and they're wonderful. But to come in as the town administrator and have more eyes and just be as involved as you have them. And thank you again, it's not just page three, look at page one, look at page two, look at page three, look at everything, thank you.
Any else? I want to make a motion to adjourn. Hope anybody, um, um, anybody on Zoom, wanna make a comment? Don't see any hands, anybody that has, start talking. Make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Did you say hi?
Hi.